Good evening and welcome to the September 5th, 2017 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I add to item number two, which is public participation. If anyone from the public would like to come to the mic and speak, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. And on to item number three, which I'm very excited about, which is the introduction of the student representative to the school board. So, I'd like to introduce our new student rep, Chris Pezzo, and if you could take the mic, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, my name is Chris. I am the school board rep for this year. I really, I enjoy playing my instrument in band, doing stuff for the robotics team and writing movie reviews for the newspaper. I decided I wanted to do this position because I wanted to run for town council in the future and then maybe go to the federal government. And that's all about me.
And you're a junior, right, Chris?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, thank you. So, welcome and we'll look forward to a great year with you, Chris. And we're on to item number four, which is a conversation with an architect about the SAU Special Offices service options. So, I will turn the mic over to Matt Chevanel and our guest architect, Paul Marinase. Welcome.
Okay, let me start off, you see Paul over there, standing off in the back. Hold on. I have, I have the guest password for the internet. Let me go and give that to them. I'm not saying it out loud.
It is one, two... Spaceballs reference. No one, no one, okay.
Excuse me for that interruption, but I know what it's like to be sitting in front of a computer trying to get it to connect up and I figured I'd try and get them that password as soon as I can. Zero, one, two, three, four, no, I'm only kidding. So, we have Paul Marinase here. Paul is the managing partner, owner, co-owner of Marinase Architects. Give you a little history on them. They were the architect that designed the middle school, the architect firm. They're the architectural firm that did all the kindergarten additions. They designed the secure entrances for Reed's, for Thornton's, for the upper elementary school. They've designed and went through on the project for Bedford High School, for Ross Lurgio Middle School. And Paul, and Frank, Paul's elder partner in the firm, has been in the business for thirty-plus years and has done school districts all over the place. So, given our history, given our, you know, time that we spent together a lot, if we figured it'd be the logical choice to ask Paul to look at the three options presented here tonight. The first one in my packet, we're gonna go the picture, then the budget for the picture, is the high school addition, one-story to the high school. So, we figured we'd start off there. So, Paul, I'll leave it up to you.
Hello, I'm Paul Marinase.
You need a microphone? Stand, like stand.
Yep. Does it come off? I have to stand here. You can carry it, but it's attached to a case. I'll just leave it, it's fine. As Matt said, we're going to be looking at three different options for housing the SAU in a, in a new space. Two of those options involve an addition to the high school and one option is a standalone building on a separate site. Well, part of this overall site, but over in a different area, over away from the high school. So, the first option we're gonna look at is a one-story addition to the end of the high school, more or less in the current location of the SAU. So, if you look at these plans, for instance, the site plan, this is the end of the high school. This is the three-story, most recent addition to the end of the high school. The rest of the high school's over in this direction. This is McKell Wayne Street and the newly paved area that drives around the back of the high school and the current SAU is right about here. So, this addition is going on top of where the current SAU is right now. The reason we're, we're looking at a one-story addition, in addition to a two-story addition, is because when you go to a second story, by necessity, you have stairwells, you have an elevator, you have duplicate spaces. So, a second, a second story is always gonna give you more square footage, a bigger building than a one-story building for something like this, for a small-scale building. So, this plan is actually more comparable to the standalone building because they're both one-story. They don't have stairwells, they don't have elevators. So, comparing apples to apples, this is probably the closest to a standalone building and the two-story addition is going to be bigger because you have those extra spaces you have to construct. All these plans we're looking at are the same program, so the same number of offices, the same, all the same spaces, functional spaces inside the building. The only differences are the configuration based on where the addition's gonna happen or the addition of stairs or elevators, if you have a two-story versus a one-story building. So, this is the first option. It is, it's off the end of the three-story building, it's a one-story addition. So, you're going from three stories to one story. We have to maintain egress from the doors that are at the end of the high school right now. So, we have to create a small vestibule in the new building in order to come out of the high school and then be able to get outside. We can't, we obviously can't lose doors out of the high school, that's not, that's not allowed by code. So, we've, we've created a small vestibule, then the entrance to the SAU and a, a door in between the two to isolate. Because you don't really want high schoolers going through the SAU to get outside. Doesn't, there's not really any functional need for that, so it's probably actually a detriment to have high school traffic going through the SAU. So, we've, we've separated the two. Even though they're in the same building, there's, there's a high school exit and an SAU entrance and exit. Off of that lobby area is a large meeting room, large conference room, similar to this space, a little bit smaller than this. A main corridor with all of the various offices for business, superintendent's area, and then special ed, federal funds. So, if you look at your packets, you'll see the plan. Lot of small offices similar to what is in the current building, organized within this addition. There's also a lower-level plan, a basement for storage, just long-term storage. Doesn't have to be terribly convenient, it's just a place to put long-term files, things like that. So, that's not shown, but it's down below a portion of this building. So, probably about a third of this building would have a basement under it for long-term storage. So, floor plan, again, this is just a blow-up of what's on this plan. Large conference room, corridor, offices, some utility spaces, and the connector to the high school. So, this, this building is about 8,800 square feet on the main level and 2,100 square feet in the basement area. So, just remember that as we go forward, you'll see each of these plans has a different size. Same program, same function in each, each of these buildings that we're looking at, but they're different sizes based on whether it's an addition, whether it's standalone, and whether it's one or two stories. So, now if you flip, I guess farther back in your packet, there are budgets. So, if you look at the first one, that says, "Proposed Merrimack SAU Building, High School, One Story." Probably the first budget you have in your packet. You'll see the breakdown of a cost estimate to build this, to build this building. And we don't really need to go through each detail, you can look at them later if you choose. The, the key numbers are site work, 'cause that varies with each addition. So, site work for this building, and actually this building or the two-story version, is about $500,000. And the, there are some unknowns to the site still because we haven't done extensive research into utilities, existing drainage systems, existing conditions of utilities in the existing building that we'll be tying into this addition. So, there, there are a few unknowns out there. But based on the information we have now, these are our best estimates. So, $500,000 for site work, $2,258,000 for the general construction. And a couple of things of note in that number are constructing the firewall between this building and the high school. Any wood-framed building we attach, which is what this would be, or light-gauge construction building that will attach to the high school, has to be separated from the high school by a firewall because it's a, it's a different type of construction. The code looks at a building like this, which is a concrete block, non-flammable building, and it treats it a certain way, but then if you have a wood-framed building, like a house or anything that's flammable, the code treats it an entirely different way. So, unless you want your whole high school to be treated as a wood-framed building, which you don't, 'cause it won't meet code, you have to separate the two buildings with a, with a firewall. So, we're building that cost into this, into this estimate. So, whenever we're attaching to the high school with, with an SAU building, we'll be constructing a firewall between the two structures. So, there is a little, a little bit extra cost associated with that. The second item that's, that's unique to an addition as opposed to a new building, is the, the concept here was to use the existing building systems in the high school and extend them out into the addition. So, your heating system, sprinkler system, all the electrical and communication systems would be expanded out into the addition. And, and one of the unknowns associated with that is that we don't know if the sprinkler system is sized to feed the addition. It, it probably is, but we don't know where the nearest large pipes are in the high school. So, there might not be a sprinkler pipe right here that's big enough to feed this building. We might have to go back a couple hundred feet into the high school, or who knows how far back, to find a big enough pipe to feed the addition. Same thing with heating systems. We don't know if we can just tap into the heating system that's right here or if we have to go back down the hallway to a bigger pipe and then extend a larger pipe out to the addition. All the other systems, communications, fire alarm, whatever. All those systems have to be brought from wherever they are in the high school out to the addition. So, we've included a line item for that, to go back into the high school, extend those systems out to the addition. So, that's $100,000, we've carried as an allowance for that. Then you can go down through the other, the other lines, which are basically construction, administrative costs. And another line item that's unique to the addition aspect of this, of this project is cost to move the SAU for a year. Because if we build this building, it's right on top of the current SAU. Obviously, they can't be living there while we're building a building on top of them. So, the SAU has to be moved somewhere else for a year. And there is costs associated with that, because you have to find space, you have to rent space, you have to make it suitable for use as an SAU, which means upgrading systems, communication system, all the various systems that go with the SAU. So, we're carrying allowance based on discussions with Matt about cost to rent space of about $300,000 for that one-year move and then move back. So, it's a pretty significant cost to do that, not to mention there's considerable disruption to everybody involved trying to move an SAU for a year and then move it to another location. So, it's a whole extra move. If you build a standalone building, you'll still have one move, but you won't be temporarily housing the SAU somewhere else. So, total cost for this option is 3.8 million, roughly. And you'll see in a minute how that compares to other options. Any questions on this before we move on?
Andy?
Just really quick, and maybe this is for Matt. When the request came from the planning board for us to look at this as an option, there may have been an expectation that we were talking about putting a brick-and-mortar addition on of the same, similar construction rather than a wood-framed building. Did that come up in the discussions at all that you had, or anything like that? I'm just, it wasn't explicitly stated, but I think there was an underlying assumption that you add on to a school, you're adding it on of the same kind of construction.
At the, at the planning board meeting, it was just called, "An addition." To do a brick-and-mortar, same type, you're looking at, what would be the cost per square foot of that, Paul?
Yeah.
That would...
You, you could do that, you could build it out of concrete block and brick. It would be more expensive than this. Square-footage cost difference, it's really not a square-foot issue, it's a, it's a, it's an area of the outside of the building issue. Probably maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars difference to have brick veneer. Concrete-block interior is more expensive, so maybe overall, maybe ten, fifteen percent more, somewhere in that range. I mean, it's not, it's not double the cost, but it's...
It's significant.
It's, it's more, yeah.
And I think the exercise, the point of the exercise here is, we wanted to look at, we didn't want to try and skew the numbers by specifying a different kind of construction method if the planning and bill, if the planning board didn't specifically state that's what they wanted us to do. So, keeping everything else equal, we chose to ga, go with the same type of construction and do the firewall, so you could look at apples to apples.
I, I think it's good to understand what it is, though, because if the question does come up, we can say, "This is the estimate to build a, a wood-framed structure attached to the high school with a firewall. If you wanted a brick-and-mortar, you're talking ten to whatever percent higher than that." So, it's goo, it's just good to have it learned.
Right.
'Cause, 'cause depending on who you think was asking the question, they could have a different assumption, so, that's it.
So, that number would be closer to 4.3 million, just as a, a running estimate?
Yeah, and that's true of all these numbers we'll look at. If you wanted a, a brick-and-block building, you could just raise them all proportionally. So, these are all apples to apples as a wood-framed building, which, which is fine for an SAU. You wouldn't necessarily build a school like that because it takes some beating, but an SAU presumably they're a little gentler on the walls than a, than middle school or high school students. One other thing to note here is, just looking at the high school site plan in general, is this is a fairly valuable site for future development for the high school. I'm not saying you have to add on to the high school in five or 10 years, but say, 50 years from now, if you want to add on to that school, you have a three-story wing here. You can add a lot of classrooms as a three-story addition right there. And it's probably the easiest place to add on in the future. So, if you build a one-story wood-framed building, you're, you're losing the opportunity to build a three-story classroom brick building in future years, who knows when, but someday down the road. So, that's something to keep in mind when you compare these, that it's kind of a prime development site for classroom space later on, as opposed to the SAU.
Okay, Cindy, you had a question as well, and then I think Michael has to stand up?
Yeah, I just had a question regarding parking. I don't see that spelled out in here.
Right.
Thank you. Board member Gualyumi has been excused for the rest of the evening and we wish her better health. So, I hope she feels much better soon. So, I know before we took our recess, Cindy asked about parking. If we could just pick up from there, that would be ideal. Thank you.
Okay, so with the addition, with the one-story addition, the building is going pretty much where the existing SAU is, but it also extends out into the existing parking area, right here. And it comes pretty close to the other parking area for the SAU. So, you'd be pretty much losing most of your existing parking for the SAU. And those, the people in this space would have to park elsewhere in the vicinity. But you're losing, I don't know how many spaces there are, maybe 15, 20 spaces, right around the immediate area of the existing SAU. Anything else on this?
I just want to... Well, I'm just gonna comment that the removal, we've talked in the past, if you put a new SAU's building up, you remove the old SAU and the old special ed building. So, that means the parking that would likely occur would be where the blue building is now. The parking could be over there, sort of across the street, so...
Right.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would have similar, probably more.
You could recoup the parking across the street.
But you wouldn't, would there be, and I guess just to follow on that, would there be opportunity for any handicap spots? 'Cause obviously that's going to be a very critical piece if you have a special education facility. Would there be any opportunity for, for parking, do you think?
Yeah, by code, we'll have to create some handicap spaces near the building. So, we'd have to carve some out somewhere nearby. I mean, it's only two or three spaces, so we could find that.
There's one in front, right now, where the, where the entrance is right in there, there's one in there right now, so...
Yeah. Yeah, we could, we could solve that.
I was just gonna ask about the buses going by, so... Kind of, the, does that encumber the bus route that's going around the school, or is it, would it be fine?
I don't know where the buses currently go.
Yeah, the, the buses, well, you notice my office is not on the corner of the building where the buses would go by. Because that's, that's really close to the bus loop that we had just paved. You know, with all those spots gone, how far do you, does it go out and, did you see our, the striping in our new parking lot with the hash lines?
Yeah, you have that sort of sidewalk, hashed area. Yeah, it goes out about to, about to where that is.
To where the hashed area is, the building.
Yeah.
So, that, that's right in the path of the buses. You'd have to probably put some bollards or something up there, just, just in case. I'm not saying a bus, but the plow goes around there, too, and you wouldn't want to have a mishap. So, there's some other site-specific stuff we'd have to do with that one-story to ensure safe passage of the buses and any delivery trucks or plow trucks that come around the building.
Are there any other questions on design number one? Moving on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the second option we looked at is also at the same high school site. In this case, it's a two-story addition, so it's a smaller footprint because it's two stories. And, and in this case, you can see the plan extends not out to the existing parking at the, at the end of the building. So, so the spaces that we were just discussing with the, the hashed area in the middle, that, that could stay. And the spaces at the back of the current site could maybe stay or maybe would have to be lost. We'd have to, we have to see exactly how that works out. But parking would not be impacted tremendously with this addition, because it's, it's a smaller footprint. The issue with the two-story building is that because you have two floors, because it's a standalone function, you don't want people going into the high school to go up or down floors. You would need to build stairs and an elevator for this, for this use, just for the use of the people in this building, independent of what's happening in the high school. In fact, the stairwell at the end of the high school has a landing that's at mid-level at the outside wall. So, you couldn't even really tie into that from the SAU, because you'd be coming into a mid-floor, if you know what I mean? It's, it's not, there's, there's no corridor at the end of the high school that's at the first or, or at the second floor level. It's, it's mid-between first and second, and then mid-between second and third. So, you couldn't build a two-story building here and have it tied directly into the high school without completely redoing the stair in the high school. So, that's, which we're not looking at doing. So, basically, you can't make a connection on the second floor. So, if you look at the plan for this, it's, it's all the same spaces, all the same offices. The only real difference is here we have a stair up against the high school, a stair at the far end of the building, and that occurs on both floors, obviously, 'cause it's a stair, it goes up through. And then an elevator that serves both floors. And an elevator machine room, which you need for the equipment that goes with the elevator. And then you have a corridor down the center, and you have a corridor on the second floor, because you need to get to all the spaces. So, the net result is that you're, you're duplicating a lot of spaces because you have a second floor. So, you have two stairs on each floor, you have an elevator on each floor, you have a whole extra corridor you're building. And then on each floor, you also need toilets, you need custodial closets, you need utility space. So, there's, there's several different spaces that you're, you're duplicating by having a second story. So, the result is, even though it's the same number of offices, the same size offices, this addition is now 12,000 square feet compared to, what do we have, 8,800 square feet for the one-story? So, it's, you know, eight, nine, so it's like 3,000 square feet bigger. And almost all of that, or just about all of that, is attributed to the duplication of stairwells, corridors, toilets, things like that. So, it's pretty obvious that a two-story addition is going to be quite a bit larger and quite a bit more expensive, therefore, than a one-story addition. And we did a budget, if you look in your packet, the second budget, I believe, where it talks about a two-story addition. The total cost for that building is $4,650,000. So, it's considerably more than the one-story version by about 800,000. And that's really largely because of the extra space. Square footage equates to dollars, so if your building's 3,000 square feet bigger, it's gonna be more expensive. So, that's the story with this addition. Any questions about this one?
Could I make one comment before we open it up? There's, there's a reason why Paul didn't bring that addition all the way to the front of the high school addition. It's because on the back wall, if you look at the back of the addition, coming front, yeah, point right, no, keep going with, yeah, right, right in that area, that entire three-story wall has no windows on it, 'cause there's science labs there. The part in the front, after the exit on the side, there's classroom windows in those, those spaces, so you have to avoid those. But that's why it's not front-to-back boom edition.
Right. Yep. Any other questions?
Are there any questions on design two?
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you.
Okay, now we're looking at the one-story standalone plan. And this is being proposed for the O'Gara Drive site. It really could go anywhere, but we have a particular site that's been selected, that's a, a good site for building on. It's, it's flat and it's good soils, and it has utilities, so it's a, it's a pretty easy site to develop. And this floor plan is actually very similar to the one-story floor plan for the addition to the high school. In fact, you can even imagine the same plan exactly stuck onto the high school. The only difference between the two is with the one-story addition to the high school, you have to build a firewall between the two, you have to spend some money extending utilities out into the SAU, and you have to deal with the cost of transporting the SAU to another site and then bringing them back. So, that's really the only differences between the standalone building and the one-story addition to the high school. But those costs are significant. So, the size of the standalone building is 8,200 square feet, plus the basement. And the size of the one-story addition to the high school is 8,800 square feet. So, it's a 600-square-foot difference. This is 600 square feet smaller than the same building added on to the high school, mostly because you don't need the connector, you don't need the, the vestibule to get kids out of the high school, except for from the SAU. On this building, obviously, you don't have that issue. The site work, actually, at this, the site of this building is a little simpler than at the high school. Even though you're developing more square footage, there's, there's not much there to worry about. At the high school, there's all sorts of utilities. There's various big utility poles with all kinds of wires coming to it. You'd have to relocate all that, probably put it underground. There's drainage issues, there's util, other utilities, sewer, sewer, all sorts of utilities going through this space that you'd have to take care of if you're gonna build there. At the site for the new building, basically, it's gonna be a blank slate, it's gonna be clean. So, even though it's, you're developing more, you're building parking lots, you're building sidewalks, the site work's the same cost, because it's a simpler site to deal with. So, a site work cost is the same for the two versions. This building's a little bit smaller than the high school one-story addition, and you don't... And you don't have to pay the cost of relocating the SAU for a year. So the overall cost of the standalone building is estimated at $3,164,000 versus $3,813,000 for the same building added onto the high school. So aside from cost and a couple other details, they're virtually the same plan.
Are there any questions on plan number three? Michael, is your hand up?
I just have more of a comment at this point, but I'll wait for people to ask questions if they have any.
Other questions? Andy?
So this building is pretty similar to, the standalone building is similar to what we've talked about in the past.
Right.
And what went up for, for vote a few years ago, to be at a site that was different, but the building was essentially the same. And obviously, the number that was asked for bonding was significantly less. And I know, I know the cost of construction has gone up since then. But it also appears that though this cost structure is much more comprehensive in terms of site work and other components that were there. So I know that Matt and the administration here is, is would you consider this, that we didn't put a fully loaded bid out before or quote out before for the bond? Or what's changed? Because this, essentially, this is a million dollars more than what we, what we asked last time and what we've been talking about.
Well, Paul and I did talk about that, and the construction costs have gone up significantly. And the, the last time, we had that at, at $1.9 million. But in addition, this is, this is more of a, a comprehensive specification as far as what's needed to be in there. We're including furniture, communications, computer systems, everything like that. I think this is more comprehensive and reflects better what the true cost of the building will be. Part of the estimate on the, the cost of the 1.9 included a prefab steel construction building that we got a bid from, from one of the local construction firms. So this is regular metal stud drywall construction with good materials. Not inadequate materials, but good materials. And the cost of everything going up in the last four to five years has really kind of driven this. Plus, we put more detail into the, the outline of the bid, or the potential budget, I should say. It's not a bid.
So the observation I would make on that is when you look at the furniture and equipment and communications, that's 350,000. You look at the site work, that's 500,000. That was not in, that's 850,000. So it went from, say, 1.8, 1.9 to 2.3. And then what we did was a more comprehensive spec of, of the actual projects, what would take to actually get the job done right the first time and not have to come back for more resources. So this is what I would call the, the real. But if you look at the difference in construction, you're probably talking, that's 400,000 because of time lost.
I do have some good news, though.
I'm, I'm waiting for that. Take it.
Okay. Back in the day when we were looking at doing this, we were looking at bonding around 1.9. And the high year on that was 265,000. I've got a debt schedule from the bond bank for 3 million plus. And the high year, which is the second year, is 287. So really, this is like a $22,000 difference in the highest year's payment between the 3.1 million dollar building and the 1.94 because of the cost of money. Cost of money is dirt cheap right now. Same term, 15 years.
15 years, okay. Naomi?
There are basically, if I remember correctly, two reasons why we're looking at this. One being the ideas that were put forward, that having it attached to the high school would provide access to that space, the high school spaces that could be used, conference rooms and so forth. And the other one being that it might feasibly be less expensive or in some way beneficial to be adding on to an existing building rather than creating it. Those were the two reasons put forward for this as the idea. I'm seeing it's, it's not less expensive. Is there anything that is advantageous from a design perspective to popping it on the end of there? Or is it simply our, because we asked you to?
We don't, we don't see any obvious advantage unless you're going to use spaces that are adjacent in the high school. But there's really nothing in there that you would be using. So that, there's no, there's no benefit, really.
Michael?
So with all the information provided tonight, what I see is that it's not worth attaching the building to the high school for multiple reasons. One, even if you took out the $300,000 for the additional space needed for a year, it's still $350,000 higher. And there's hidden costs that I don't think we know about, which we've talked about code, we've talked about moving gas lines, all this other stuff. So now you're talking about adding even more. And then additionally, there's no real cross-use of space because they have to be separated. It's, it's shown that it's need to be separated. Additionally, you pointed out that the land could be saved for much more beneficial use in the future. So I think, I'm just going to put it out here that I think that we've reviewed this to the point where I think that we can move on and look at separate thing. And obviously, when we do present, or when it is presented, that all this information is obviously provided to the taxpayers at that time and when we make that decision. So, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments on plan number three? We have a live architect here. This is our moment. So on that note, thank you for the hard work that you did, you did putting this together and giving us the real clarity on our options within district boundaries. This is the kind of research that's going to help us to make the best informed decision. Data makes a, a good decision. You know, we know what, you know, what might or might not make sense. But I think, you know, some of the concerns they had, and I think, Michael, I'll play off of your last comment, that if there's a meeting room that needs to be had, it doesn't, just because it's not attached to the high school doesn't mean it's not have the potential of being available to the community. So that's, I don't think that one excludes it from the other. So I know that we're definitely always been a collaborative team player. And if that space was needed, I'm sure it would be afforded to the, the community that needs it. So I'm not worried at all on that, on that level. So on that note, I think you've given us a lot to think about. And I know that you have a lot of experience and institutional knowledge in, in our district. So this, this is a very well-thought-out plan because I think you definitely have the insight that we needed knowing our, our, our footprint. So this is great information. What I would say is that this would be great information, that if we could just share the packet with a cover letter to the planning board, just let them know that was properly vetted, they can look at the options and the, and the costs. And hopefully, that will give them the, the due diligence, the understanding of the due diligence that we took. So. And if we can also put this on our website, it's always good to know, you know, what our options were, how we, you know, vetted our options and what the, you know, obvious conclusion is from the board's perspective. So with that, we thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Architects always bring big pictures, so hold on. So we are going to move on to item number five, which is the outcome from the James Mastercolla Upper Elementary Teachers' Participation at the Honeywell Educators, at Honeywell Educators at Space Academy. So I bring to the table Principal Marshall McGill, Jim Lucy from Honeywell, Ashley Meehan, Keith Tanner, and Bill Morris, our Assistant Principal at the Upper Elementary School. So thank you and welcome all. I knew the science curriculum coordinator would have to come. Absolutely. Reason for the season, right, Bill? So thank you, welcome.
Thank you. We're excited to be here tonight to share with you the exciting experience that two teachers at the Upper Elementary School had the great fortune to participate in, and that's Space Camp. And we're very thankful to Honeywell and to Jim Lucy for having the opportunity provided to teachers in our district. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Ashley Meehan and Keith Tanner, who had the experience at Space Camp and let them share their exciting adventure.
Well, good evening, everybody. And I wanted to thank everybody for helping us with setting up the computer. In a few minutes, Ashley put together a neat little slideshow, video, which kind of shows a lot of us having fun or shows us having fun. And it was, the whole experience was unbelievable. I also wanted to thank Jim for, for passing the information down to Marge and Marge to Mark and Mark to Marcia. And giving us this opportunity. It was, again, a fantastic experience. You know, who knew? Huntsville, Huntsville, Alabama was, and I guess, you know, thinking about my childhood, you know, did I think of space? And yeah, I did. I thought of space. I thought about the moon. Did I think about ever really thinking about going into space or anything like that? I think I had more fear about it than anything. I really kind of admired those that did do that. But going there and just kind of getting submerged with everything that they gave to us, you couldn't help but just get excited. And their message to us basically was that we're teaching the Mars generation. And this is what they expect. And it's this, this group that they think in 2032 will have the impact of going to Mars. And it's, it sounds crazy. It really, really does. But they're very passionate. And that passion was contagious. And we all got very, very much involved. We stayed at the University of Alabama Huntsville. And right around the corner, literally five minutes, we'd board those old 1960 NASA school buses, which are really cool, the blue ones that you'd see on, on very, and thank God they're air-conditioned because it was pretty warm. And, but they would take us over. And five minutes around the corner, there the camp was. And it's a museum as well. And they have this teacher camp. Honeywell puts, sponsors the, two weeks of it. And so two groups go. And it comes out to about 200 teachers get this opportunity a year. And the camp itself, there's, there's family camps going on, family space camp going on, there's. What's that?
The child camps.
The child camps were going on as well. Yep. And our day was seven to seven. And we'd start with breakfast. We'd get over there, we'd have breakfast, and then we'd start right in. And a day looked basically like. This one not working. Matt's got your name on it. So a day basically looked like we'd go over and, and we'd have at least two NASA experiences in the day. And then we would have two curriculum experiences within that day. And then we'd have some kind of speaker. And we had some really cool speakers. Homer Hickam, who was the author of Rocket Boys and the movie October Sky was based on his life. He was the first speaker. And second speaker was Ed Buckby, who was the last of the Space Cowboys who managed all those astronauts in the 60s and 70s and had some really, really crazy stories. And Clayton Airson was the third speaker that we had, who was on the last two shuttle missions. And he was quite a speaker, very entertaining. And each message that they, and, and that they left us with was if it wasn't for a teacher, they wouldn't have done what they did. And it was, it was really, and it was touching. And Homer Hickam, in the book Rocket Boys as well as the movie, really, really shows that. So it was pretty cool. Some of the activities that we did that were curriculum-based, a lot of STEM, all STEM activities, all connected to science and math. We had one that was really, really cool where they laid out a bunch of materials in front of us. And we had to figure out, okay, what materials, and each, each material costs a certain amount of money or points. And we were only allowed so many points. And we had to make a heat shield that was the thickness of a pencil. And we had an eggnog or an egg on the other side of it. And we had, and then they would put a blowtorch on our heat shield. And they compared it to Apollo 11, who, which was sitting over in the museum. And you could see the back of it and how it had kind of burned up as it was coming back into atmosphere. And we had to figure out, and ours did survive. Our egg did make it through the experience. So we were charmed there. But we also did some rocket building. We put some raspberry pies in rockets and measured, yep, and got data, measured velocity, measured height and so forth. And, and everybody involved, I mean, it was just, you know, the whole white coat experience, the NASA guys, you know, or the teachers that were there were really, really cool. The camp itself was very, very well organized. Can't say enough about, you know, encouraging maybe future, future teachers to go. It's, it's the experience itself. So what do we bring back? We brought back a lot of resources in regards to manuals and so forth that we can integrate with into our own. And as you guys have listened to us for the last few years in regards to our science curriculum, we do have Earth and Space in there. Actually, I decided we're going to do a STEM club after school, which would incorporate a lot of what we learned and, and a lot of these manuals as well. The experience itself, we were on a team of 16. Obviously, all of us were teachers. The culture, it's unbelievable. It was such a great experience to see that, the teaching culture from all over the world. I mean, we had folks from upstate New York and, and all the way down to Texas. But we also had Czechoslovakians, we had Slovakia, we had a British gentleman who actually taught in the border of Switzerland. So we spoke fluent French, Romania, Australia. Yep. So we had a really wide range. And, and that was just 16 of us. And, and we did our team things every day. Awesome experience. Again, you'll see some of the things in, in the slideshow that we were able to experience and have fun with. The people, just like, again, the culture. At the end, when it came to the end, you know, we, they provided a, an awards banquet underneath Saturn V, which was laid horizontal in the museum. And I mean, it was a band playing within the museum. And it was just a, yep, dancing and just, it was just a really, really nice experience. And they really, really treated us well. So.
I don't know. I don't think I can say it better than you did right there. We did put together, I mean, we, I think the coolest thing, we got to bring our flight suit. It will be worn for sure in the classroom. It was just too hot today to wear it. But I have a slideshow together. I may need to re-log in, so bear with me a moment. But it's about five minutes and it puts together in pictures just a fraction of what we were lucky enough to do there. So I'm going to go try to get that work, hopefully, sound works.
Some of the other activities that we were able to do NASA-wise is we, they actually had a frame of a helicopter. And they dunked us in the helicopter. And we had to figure out how to get out of the helicopter. Now, granted, we're all teachers, so they didn't like flip it over and turn out the lights. It was, you know, basically dropped it into this huge pool and we had to figure out how to get out. Zip line down into the, I mean, it was cool. Zip line down into the, backwards down into the same pool. We were on the spinner. And you'll see a little bit of that in a second too. And it's funny, that particular story, I'll admit, I, I kind of played that one out a little bit because we had just had breakfast. They took us right to the spinner. And it's the one where you see, and it's not the one that whips around the room, but it's the one that twirls and the MAT. And I was really thinking, I'm not going to be able to do this. I just ate, believe it or not, chicken and grits, you know, for breakfast. I don't know if I'm going to be able to manage, manage this. So I kind of waited and, and held out a little bit. And everybody seemed to be going through pretty successfully. So I jumped on that. And what ends up happening is you don't even feel.
You don't.
You know, your center of gravity is pushed against the seat. You focus on a number on your thing. And we did it for a minute. The astronauts back in the 60s used to do it for hours.
Forty-five minutes at a time.
That's crazy.
I was good for a minute. I don't know about you.
So just some of, some of the things that we were able to do. And, but it's just perspective and, and new energy, coming back with new energy. My room right now has my flight suit actually tacked to the board and, and a little bit of a space theme going on and.
But the amount of things they provided with us to bring, bring home. When, before we got there, they told us to log into social media if you have an account and get advice from people who have been before. And everyone said, bring an extra suitcase for all your swagger. And I thought, I'll be all right. I was trying to put things in places and, I mean, I had posters coming out of my carry-on backpack just so I could make room for all the incredible resources we were given. We got to take tangible three teacher educator guides home each. And we have access to everything online.
What was kind of really fortunate was we got there and, and we felt very fortunate that, that we were able to go. But then hearing it from other folks, oh, we've applied for five years in a row and have never heard anything or never had that opportunity. And for the two of us to get chosen to go was really neat. So yeah, so and those resources that Ashley was just talking about, she got fifth grade and below. And I got sixth grade and a little above. So we were able to kind of work the resources that way. Yeah. So.
I do believe the video's ready. Hoping sound is hooked up. If not, maybe I can put a microphone to the.
We're taking a risk that might take a while to warm, we'll have like mood lighting for part of the rest of it. Wow.
Real dark. No, it's too dark. It is fine. It will break.
I'm gonna pause it for a minute. It is.
A lot of stuff we've taken. It's just gonna be all pretty long without
Ground control to Major Tom. Ground control to Major Tom. Take your protein pills and put your helmet on. Ten. Ground control to Major Tom. Seven. Six. Five. Four. Three. Two. One. Lift off.
Thank you.
You're talking
Oh, my God.
So I'm past 100,000 miles. I'm feeling very skilled. And I think my spaceship knows which way to go. Tell my wife I love her very much now. Ground control to Major Tom. You're so insane. There's something wrong. Can you hear me, Major Tom? Can you hear me, Major Tom? Can you hear me, Major Tom? Can you hear? And I'm floating on my tin can. My earth is blue and there's nothing I can do.
I'm just really glad it worked. So that was just literally a practice of what we did while we were there. But one of the greatest things that we got to do
Cut on. Okay. Okay. One of the greatest things that we got to do was we worked together as a team to come up with a mission badge. Every mission that goes up, they they create a patch. And we had to work together to kind of figure out a way to represent all of us as a team. And what we've done is we were very lucky to have one of our team members take the time to take the design that we created. I actually, I love to draw, so it was a way for me to do it at night. So I created the visual, and then it was turned into a mission patch. So we wanted to thank you. So we have brought you back a patch for team unity. So we'll come and pass those up to everybody.
I'll go through and I'll explain our targets. So I will go through our purpose for it. Why we chose
The top represents the year that we went and the mission number, which was 37. All of the flags on the outside of it represent every country within our team. We were we were lucky. We had a huge collection of countries there. The middle, we were, you know, working on the Orion mission. So we have in the corner, the Orion constellation, unity. So all the flags around are connected to symbolize that we're working together. We have the moon with the next type of rocket ship going up. Because we went to the shuttle when they were trying to build the International Space Station, and they need to bring more materials up. But it's more cost effective to do a rocket form. So we're going back to that. And then coming out of the book, because we as teachers are here to make our kids go beyond think beyond and and aim high. So that was the purpose of our mission patch. And it's really great to have it in fruition. So I will iron it on as soon as I can.
And as you can see, the book is or the rocket's coming out of a book. So also got a chance to see a little bit of New Hampshire there as well in the museum. BAE was represented as well as Raytheon. And like again, it's a museum. So there's other things there. Redstone Armory was where Von Brown came over from when we decided to when he surrendered to us in World War II. And we decided to take him for for our rocket program. And that's where it all started was right there in Huntsville. And they actually still do have a mission controller that monitors the space station. We didn't see that, but down the road. And so just really cool, cool stuff.
And Keith had mentioned before Homer Hickam being there. And he was one of the first books I actually fell in love with was October Sky. As I was older, and from then on, my love for space developed over time. So as you know, I mentioned a long time ago that I would have loved to have gone up into space if I could have. So I got to live my childhood dream as an adult, which is just unreal. Sometimes I pinch myself. I keep on telling Keith, I want to go back.
So I think I'd go to to the moon now, where I was a little hesitant. But I don't still about Mars. I'm still a little bit nervous. I'll talk the kids into it, I think, before I
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lucy, is there anything you'd like to add?
It's just an honor to be invited. I've been with Honeywell for 25 years. And it's nice to be able to have see this side of the organization and to be able to give back and see and hear what you guys have to share. It's a it's very cool. So I'm thankful for your commitment to our organization over the years. And it's nice to be able to give back. So thank you for inviting me.
We want to thank you for giving us a wonderful opportunity to send two educators to space camp, just the resources that they will bring back and the opportunities for the children of Merrimack, I think, is just a really exciting opportunity. So thank you for assisting us in this adventure.
And I would have to say, we've never had a venture relationship that gave us such a such a dividend. I mean, thank you, Jim, for thinking of us. And, you know, all the work you do with us, you're using our crawl spaces, you don't think about space. So it really is, you know, you've been I've been working with you since I was on planning and building. So 2005 ish, when we did that that utility assessment and saved and what your company's done for us, I mean, not only could we not have afforded to send two teachers to this camp, not that we've been able to get them in without your help, which was paramount. But really, it's, you know, you've done so much work with us to to help us to make good cost decisions for this district and, you know, maximize the the quality of the environment that we are are teaching in. So you really, you know, every day you have a very direct impact on education. And now our teachers have have seen it firsthand in Alabama. And we can't thank you enough for that opportunity. It's it really is, you know, we the respect we have for you and your organization, it does have a lot to do with, I think, your relationship with us. You know, our passion for education, our passion for, you know, having the best school district we can present to our kids. And and it's relationship building that gives us this opportunity. And we thank you, Jim, for for thinking of us first when when this opportunity came to to light. So we look forward to, you know, more down the road. So Are there any questions from the board? Because there's a lot going on with this. So yeah, of course, Mark.
I just I just want to, because it's such an important night, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to draw people's attention to so many themes that Keith and Ashley raised tonight, and that you Shannon raised when you were talking about Jim, are connected to things that we're really trying to be about in our district, just to name a few. The school business partnerships, as you pointed out, I mean, that's the wave. And we have to catch it. And Honeywell has been so great and helpful in setting the stage and the model for what that looks like. Also, taking risks. Both Keith and Ashley did that by applying and by going and risked failing. Wasn't a foregone conclusion that they would have been accepted. You would have been fine. Well, disappointed with that, but you would have understood it. And the the fact that that then gets translated to your students, and these two people are critical players on our science committee team, and the fact that that gets translated to your students, as you too can risk. And if it didn't work out this time, it'll work out again. And and then most importantly, the power of teachers. And I love that the the patch, central theme is that all that wonder comes out of the learning from the book. And that's, that's really powerful. So I just, this is not just an esoteric out there thing. It directly relates to so many things that we're trying to be about in our district. So this patch means an awful lot because it really captures all of that in a way. So thank you very much. And thank you again to Honeywell.
So questions from the board? Because I have a couple. I know you said you brought home three books each. So what's what opportunities or what ideas have you thought of to take your knowledge, your firsthand knowledge and bring it to your peers?
Well, the books that we we took weren't aren't directly centered around our curriculum per se. Some of them are, especially, you know, the forces in motion. But they're great activities to bring to clubs for the kids to explore who may be more interested in what, you know, the Earth space has to offer that we may not be able to present every day within the classroom.
Excellent. So and on that note, I think that the science curriculum is in great hands. We spent a lot of time this summer talking about it. And I can't wait to see it in action. So the two most passionate ambassadors we have right now with the only cool outfits amongst the group, obviously. So but definitely, this is this is, you know, why we do what we do. And we we love seeing teachers and their passion and being able to be rewarded for giving 110% of the classroom. And good luck on day two. So we got through day one, basically. But we'll find out when we get home. But, you know, honestly, it's been it's been a pleasure, you know, seeing you prepare for this, seeing you come back, what you've learned, what you've experienced, and sharing that with our district and and your peers. So the, you know, keep the spark for science alive. I know it's Chris at the high school has, you know, he's in robotics. We have Science Olympiad. So you can see where that's it's going to feed itself upwards. So I definitely think that this is exactly the type of thing that we need to get.
Chris, they do do like high school programs down there as well. They do high school programs down there as well.
I was gonna sign up for one, but it was a lot of money.
So and and Jim, again, you know, we've done so much with you with the gas lines, with the retrofitting of of all our utilities to be able to save money for this district. You know, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of research doing what's, you know, what's best for this district. And it's almost paid off, honestly. It's paid for itself already, but the bond itself is still in existence. But that's, you know, that's something that we really want to just get out there that your your consultative approach really gave us maximize our efforts. And, you know, it's just something I think about every year when we go into budgets is without those Honeywell savings, where are utility bills would have been? So in November and December, we will be thinking of you fondly with a giant book in front of us, knowing that it could have been much worse if it wasn't for you. So we thank you again. Excellent. Thanks, guys. So we are on to speaking of utilities and all that good stuff, item number six, which is the update on summer capital improvement projects with Matt.
Thank you. Seems like not too long ago, we were talking about these and plotting these out on a chart. And then we went through the budget process and they got approved. And so then we had to make it happen and make it happen over the summertime. First of all, I'd like to thank Tom Toussot, the facilities director, Mike Dumay, the assistant facilities director, and all the custonians and the mechanics who work for the Merrimack School District, who all hit a hand in some in some way, Tom and Michael especially, in making all these projects come to fruition. So I just want to thank them immeasurably for their hard work and dedication. High school is a bevy of activity. You obviously have seen the bus loop. It looks 100 times better. We weren't planning on, but we had to repave the parking lot where the SAU offices. After the winter and into the spring, it just didn't make it. There were large chunks of it gone on on one side, and it just fell apart. So we did in front of the high school, we did the entire bus loop going back of the high school, fixed that area that was a little bit compromised, and then came up from behind the high school on the den on the highway side, Everett Turnpike, and finished it off right then and there in that location. We also We also, before we did that, we completed the sidewalk. So the sidewalk at the high school's been demoed, granite curbing has gone in, it's all been repoured, it looks really nice. This time we did this, um, the same thing as the middle school when we did the sidewalk there. We, we hired Miller Engineering to test the strength of the, uh, the concrete and the, uh, particulars of the composition of the concrete to make sure it was within specification. So hopefully we won't have to be replacing these sidewalks somewhat earlier than we had planned to. We're also having the budget, the amount of money to seal the sidewalks in this year's budget and then in, in subsequent, we'll, budgets will put those in, I believe, once every five years. So we also had the HVAC upgrade at the high school. That was a Honeywell project. That's complete. The asbestos removal at the high school, that, that is all complete, as well as the replacement of the family consumer science cabinets that were in that, that area. Thornton's Ferry roof, that's complete, but there's 400 feet of, um, side cap that needs to be put on the building. It's a decorative type of, uh, piece. The roof is all weather tight, everything like that, but there's just this side cap that needs to be put on. That'll probably happen within a week. The JMU's, uh, library, while not part of the operating budget, but funded by the trustees, I believe that's like 99.9% done. Uh, I think they're still waiting on a couple of pieces of furniture to complete it. And then the Merrimack Middle School sidewalk looks terrific also. We reused the granite that was already in place and put that back into place and then poured brand new concrete and then, and then did the testing of the concrete after it was poured to make sure it was, uh, the proper kind and the proper strength. So that was the summer. It went by quickly, is all I can say.
I see Michael has a question?
Uh, first I'd like to say that I've gone through and seen quite a few of those and they do look, uh, very nice and well done. I did have one question on the sidewalks, if there's something that we could do on the rusty plates and maybe do like a Merrimack blue or something on this?
You know, Tom and I were having a conversation about the rusty plates and we talked with CSSI and that's the way they come. They, now they're steel, they last forever and they just have that rusty kind of patina. It doesn't rust from the inside up, it just rusts, it has a layer on there. You don't really want to paint them or anything like that. So Tom called up Bedford School District who had the same thing done and I went by that and lo and behold, it's the same plates. And so I checked out a few different areas, but I noticed they are kind of an orange and they have a tinge and that's the way they are, but they'll be like that for, forever. It would be nice to put some sort of coating, but it's, I'm told that's the way they are. You have plastic versions too, that they don't last as long. So I know exactly, just Tom and I were just standing there looking at these plates going, are you serious? But then we got educated as to that, that's the way they are and that's the look that they have.
Are there any other questions on the summer projects? Um, have we gotten any feedback at the high school? That's the first day and I didn't ask my kids yet. But how is the air quality and sound quality for study halls and cafeteria living?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't gone in there. It hasn't had, it hasn't really had the opportunity to run yet.
Okay.
So I haven't had a, had a listen to it. I wasn't there when they did the initial startup, uh, but I'm sure the sound is better. But I'll, I'll report back and maybe I'll have Tom just flip it on for me during the day when kids go home, just to hear what it's like.
Now, I know it's designed to cool the kitchen, but does it also have a cooling effect to the cafeteria area?
Yeah, it should, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you for the update and lots of hard work and, and again, we're very, we're very happy with the results and, and thank Tom and his team for all their hard work and oversight and yours as well. So I know that you oversee that whole area, so thank you. It was a great summer. Um, we're on to item number seven, which is a review of the 2017 August Academy with Mark.
So I want to start by thanking the board for its, um, continuing to allow us to have this kind of innovative professional development program. And it's not typical. What's more typical is, um, a day in the late summer, early fall, a day in the winter, a day in the spring. The benefit of that is that you can reconnect with people over the course of time. The downside is that it's very hard to create anything of substance and sustainability when you just have six hours one day not to be repeated again for another several months. So what we have here is an opportunity to really dig deep. And this year, we did again. The theme this year, it's interesting to pick up on what Keith Tanner and Ashley Meehan have talked about. The theme this year was the power of a teacher. And the point that we were trying to make with that theme is that, um, despite individual initiatives that we have to be about, um, there's a certain consistency in what we've been trying to do lately. We've been trying to build a sense of connection between K through 12 and collaboration. We've been trying to increase, um, student agency and student voice. We've been trying to create a, a climate of inquiry and, um, all of those things were embedded into this year as well. But we had two very specific initiatives that we needed to address as well. One was, um, the introduction of our K-12 math program, uh, curriculum and the tool to support it. And the other was continuing our social, emotional, health and wellbeing initiative. So, um, we tried to weave all of those things together in our three days. So day one was Tuesday, August 29th, and that was a full day. Our keynote speaker was Dr. Adam Sainz from Texas A&amp;M University. Uh, he wrote a book called The Power of a Teacher, uh, that we were able to provide to our teachers. And in it, he, uh, explores in his own personal life, a very interesting personal story, how the influence of two teachers literally changed the course of his life, growing up very poor in the Rio Grande Valley in Texas, um, to becoming a, uh, uh, PhD from Texas A&amp;M with work at Harvard Medical School, Brown, um, and another PhD from Oxford, um, all because two high school teachers stuck with him. And interesting side note, later on, after he gained some, um, success in his life, he went back to his hometown and prevailed upon the, um, town council in that town to rename two of the schools after, um, teachers. And they said, well, who might you have in mind? And he said, well, I've got two. And so there's the Polly McRoberts Elementary School and the, uh, the Etta Axley Middle School in his town, um, named after the people who changed his life. So he really gave a wonderful day to our teachers, um, in addition to sharing his story and their influence, what, what they can grasp as their influence, talking about how caring for themselves as people, um, can provide benefits to students. So when we talk about caring for our teachers, um, it's, it's right to do, but it really is important to do because when teachers are supported and cared for, they are able to produce, uh, maximum benefit for our students. So why wouldn't we do that? So when we talk about supporting our teachers, we're really talking about supporting our students and creating the conditions where they can be presented with the most functioning teachers that they can have. Day two, uh, for the elementary staff and related service providers was an introduction to the Envision's 2.0 math tool. And we had consultants fly from across the country to come and to, um, present to our teachers at three different sites, um, all about that. And that was day one for elementary staff. Day one for secondary staff was a keynote by Dr. Cassie Yakley, um, who spoke to secondary folks and related providers. And her theme was understanding brain research and how, um, if a, if an educator understands how an adolescent brain, particularly adolescent brain, um, works and understands the triggers that make learning more or less likely than teachers can be more empowered to make those decisions to support student learning. That was the morning. Uh, the afternoon, uh, was time with, um, helpers. Those are the group of people that, um, we identify as the mental health committee, guidance and so on. And they, uh, worked with Cassie on, uh, evidence-based, person-centered planning, how to make sure you create an environment where students are at the center of every decision. Uh, we had our special educators, uh, learning about applied behavioral analysis, ABA, with Alyssa Johnson coming in. Uh, on Thursday, the 31st, uh, for the elementary folks, we had a rollout of, um, the new math curriculum and followed by time to plan and play, meaning, uh, time to take the math curriculum and the new material that was developed and that was, that was purchased and to start to develop units for implementation in the first couple of months of this year. I should have mentioned that on Wednesday and then finishing on Thursday, um, the secondary folks and related, uh, providers worked on something called design thinking, which is a way to, um, take the, um, stories of individual students and try to reimagine how they might even be improved, uh, with, um, very specific strategies for, uh, working cross district, uh, cross grade and cross discipline. And there's a very specific protocol for that. We learned about that and then the teachers, um, developed very specific strategies to employ globally off of the stories of individual students. And that concluded on Thursday as well. And so overall, uh, we had a very, very, uh, successful and very busy three days, but it was an excellent start because what we've tried to do is continue to, um, you know, support initiatives. We, we have a math program, we have to give it its due, but we tried to put it in the context of taking risks. So we've said to our teachers and our students, and I say to our parents, if things aren't perfect in the next couple of weeks, as we're rolling out a new curriculum and a new tool, um, that isn't to be expected. That would be a standard too high. What you can be guaranteed is that you have teachers and administrators, um, absolutely invested in making this curriculum work and be as productive for students as possible. But you, you have to remove the fear of it not being perfect right away. Same message we give to students. And, uh, so anyway, and I would encourage anybody who's interested, either on the board or anybody who might be watching, to, um, to research Dr. Adam Sainz. It's S-A-E-N-Z. There's a great YouTube video, 17 minutes, which is a smaller version of what he provided us for a day. I think you might find it interesting and inspiring and in any event, that's the gentleman who came to us, um, from Texas. And, uh, so we thank you again for giving us the opportunity for a three-day academy. It's, I don't take it for granted, it's rare and it provides us with opportunities we just would not have otherwise. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? I will say that you always keep it a very robust three days and I think that when you talk about, you know, teachers planning workshop days, plan before the first day, I think that you're definitely taking that strategy and really making it thrive. I know, you know, I definitely work with people of other communities and they are, um, they're jealous of, of what we're doing, you know, when they're taking that random Tuesday off or a teacher planning day with their kids and it's disruptive. But, you know, and kids take the day off, pick it up where they left off in the middle of a week. We don't do that. We front load it and we front load our teachers for success. So in day one in the classroom, they feel that, you know, they have been exposed to all the tools we, we have to offer and, and more with the experts that you're bringing in. So I think that's, that what we're doing is definitely showing dividends and showing, um, I'm, I'm hearing the value when I talk to teachers, you know, and just in conversation about where, where they see this academy and how they, they get value out of it. So, you know, I know that you also study, you know, the effectiveness of those academies every year and, and use that to drive your next, uh, curriculum for the next summer. So we look forward to, uh, to more of these successful weeks ahead. So I know that, uh, it's been working well, you know, to date. So thank you. So questions or comments on that one? We're good? Okay, we're on to item number eight, which is a request to bargain successor agreement for the Merrimack Educational Support Staff Association. Um, we are at the conclusion of the third year of a three-year agreement. So, um, was it 1718 is the last year of our agreement with Mesa, which is these, uh, Educational Support Staff Association. So you'll hear Mesa quite a bit from us. And so we are looking to renegotiate with them for a new agreement, uh, so we don't have a lapse. That would take effect July 1st, 2018. Uh, the negotiating team will be myself and Naomi and we'll be working with the support staff to, uh, to try to find that, that common ground to, uh, to achieve mutual goals. So, um, more will come, I'm sure, as time goes on. So, but, uh, we look forward to a, to a successful negotiating session. And we're on to item number nine, which is the approval of the August 14th, 2017 minutes. Whoops, I totally missed something. I took my old one, sorry. It's been a wild night. So, and these are all the old ones. Try again. Okay. So where are we on? Sorry about that. Um, new school board policy, you're right, we did go. So at your places, uh, we have a, a proposed school board policy. I will turn the mic over to Marge.
Thank you so much. So this summer, late in the summer, um, a law came forward that needs to be put in place for this year, so I'm putting before you now. Um, its title is Health Education and Exemption From Instruction. So I will read it and then pause and tell you how we're going to proceed. Consistent with Department of Education requirements, health and physical education, including instruction about parts of the body, reproduction and related topics, will be included in the instructional program. Instruction must be appropriate to grade level, course of study and development of students and must occur in a systematic manner. The superintendent will require that faculty members who present this instruction receive continuing in-service training, which includes appropriate teaching strategies and techniques. Parents' guardians will have the right to inspect health and physical instruction materials, which will be made reasonably accessible to parents' guardians and others to the extent practicable. Parents and legal guardians shall be notified by email, other written means, website, social media postings, or phone call, not less than two weeks in advance of use of the curriculum course material to be used for instruction of human sexuality or human sexual education, that the material is available for inspection at the school. The notice will identify and provide contact information for the member of staff or faculty whom a parent or guardian should contact to arrange an opportunity to inspect the curriculum course material. Parents' guardians who wish to review or inspect health and physical education materials may arrange a meeting with the principal to review the materials. Opt-out procedure and form. Parents' guardians or students over 18 years of age who do not want their child to participate in a particular unit of health or sex education instruction for religious reasons or religious objections are allowed to have their child opt out of such instruction. Parents' guardians who wish to have their child opt out of such instruction are required to complete the district opt-out form and state the particular unit of curriculum in which the student is not to participate. Any student who is exempted by request of the parent guardian under this policy may be given an alternative assignment sufficient to meet state requirements for health education. The alternative assignment will be provided by the health or physical education teacher in conjunction with the principal. Parents' guardians who do not want their child to participate in a particular unit of health or physical education for religious reasons must complete a health or physical education opt-out form. Opt-out forms are available from either the health education teacher or the principal. Opt-out requests must be submitted annually and are valid only for the school year in which they are submitted. See also Merrimack School District Board Policy, IG E, Exceptions to Use of Specific Course Materials. The legal references are RSA 186, Coleman 11, 9C and 9E, Notice to Parents' Guardian Required. New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Section ED 306 dot 40, Health Education Program. New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Section ED 302 dot 41, Physical Education Program. RSA 189 colon 11, 9B, Health and Sex Education, and Appendix IHIM dash R, Health or Physical Education Opt-Out Form. So what I would say is tonight, obviously, is the first reading, um, September 18th, the second review, and the hope would be that the board would adopt this on October 2nd. Given the fact that we already have as a part of our policy, uh, the idea that if a parent has an objection to general course material... has an objection to general course material, they can make contact with the administration. And in fact, we work on an alternative method or some other instruction. So, we already have that in place. But this specifically speaks to health education, and so, we need to just get this on the books. So, do you have any questions for me at this time?
I saw Michael, then Andy, then Naomi.
I just have a question for clarification on the fourth paragraph, where it talks about email, or email other written means. Is it supposed to say like, "or other written means," or is it, to this means, to me, it means that you have to email, you have to write, you have to do the web, you have to do media, and you have to do a phone call? Or, like, it doesn't really define how extenuous you have to actually broadcast this out, I guess.
So, are you, are you asking Mike to change other written means to, like, I think it might have implied letters, so it just said, is that the one that you're?
I'm just, I think an email and a written notice might be, you cover electronic and you cover going home. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I think we contemplated, and the leadership team is going to look at this when we first come together next week. I think we also thought that we could put the curriculum on our website to just have it there, and then it's just when the teacher covers it, I mean, to be very open about it, so.
Yeah, I was gonna actually follow up with saying that I think it should be posted on the website, but I don't think you have to post it every single time on the website. I think you have to just post the actual policy on the, and what steps it would take for a parent to actually do. So, I, to me, it just seems like you're having to do this every single year, or every single time you do it, it kind of, to me, reads that way, that you would have to do all the communications every single time.
All right, so, I've taken down your concern and so on, and so, let me work on it between now and the 18th, because I also will meet with the principals.
Then I just had a follow-up one on the last paragraph for, on the first page. So, I'm just trying to understand this, it says, "or physical education." Is this, I mean, the way it reads to me is that a parent could opt out of physical education course, any of them, not just in regards to sex ed or something like that? And that is how it is?
So, go ahead.
It's rare, but there might be some students, for instance, who would choose to opt out if they felt like dressing for a sport, for instance, would put them in a position where they were showing more of themselves than they would wish to.
Thank you for clarification.
Andy, then Naomi?
So, in both cases where you say that a parent's or guardians are able to opt out, it's all based around religious beliefs. Is that what the guidance is around the opt-out? Is it, does it have to be religious? What is, why is it limited to that in these cases?
No, a parent could come forth with any reason, and they specify on the opt-out form what their concern is. In some cases, it might be that a parent feels that he or she is better able to discuss this topic than to have a teacher do such. And so, what we would do is, the teacher and/or principal would sit and talk in terms of the material that needs to be covered, as a requirement of the Department of Ed, and then there would be a conferring about how that was to be done.
My only concern is that, in the first one, you say, parents opt out of health or sex education for religious reasons or religious objections are allowed to have their child opt out. It seems to be limited to religious only, and it's the same on the very bottom, physical education for religious reasons. So, I guess the key is, it sounds like the parents have the, can use whatever reason it is, it doesn't need to be limited to religious reasons.
Naomi?
Minor grammatical point only. I think that it's clear to a reasonable reader, as is, but the first paragraph under opt-out procedure and form essentially reads that students over the age, over 18 years of age who do not want their child to...
So, what we might be able to do is just put students over 18 years of age or parents' guardians, who do not want their child to, just flip it. Mm-hmm, thank you.
That was my note. Andy?
So, I want to piggyback on what Michael was saying. So, it talks about all the different notification methods, but then you talked about only do it once, not every year?
No, just, so, the website itself, have it just posted as a policy, so that is out there for all parents to have.
So, this policy that we're talking about here?
Yeah, and this, and basically a follow-up of what the, what the steps would be to take it. So, I'm just thinking, the website, it should be kind of posted versus every year, you have to post it again and notify on the website. So, you'd still, you'd still notify a parent via an email or written method yearly, but the website itself would have its, as a standard policy and procedure available for anybody to view, and the steps needed to actually take that, that action, so.
Okay. I think I know what you're saying, but I'm curious how you can do that in a way, because really what you're talking about is, the, this states the policy, and then you're gonna have someplace where it talks about how the policy is implemented, so when you get notified every year, you'll have a place to go to find out what it means.
That could be a different direction, too.
But the problem is, is that, the question is, how does a parent get the notification? Because it talks about email, other written means, so when we're ready to go through that, that part of the class, the parent, I mean, are you talking about using all those methods, one of the methods?
That's kind of what I was gonna, clarification on that.
So, I think what I'm presenting to you tonight to get us proceeding forward is exactly the school board policy, or the policy that was put forward by the New Hampshire School Boards Association as a model policy. However, we always take these policies, and we put them before the leadership team, because obviously, it is the principal who's responsible for the fulfillment of the policy. So, by the time I come back to you on the 18th, they will have responded to this, and so, that's why I say I'm taking in all of your thought, and then I would like to have it before them, because they're the ones that are going to implement it, and just confer about what they think is the best method. In the mind of the legislature, I think they were thinking about this as being pertinent for students in grades six through 12, and so, obviously, I'm very interested in what those principals feel is reasonable and doable. We just need to make sure that we've notified, that we notify on annual basis, and that people have the opportunity to opt out if they feel that's appropriate.
And I think the one thing that we were talking about was that they do have to re-up annually, so as we do put stuff on the website, we're gonna want to date those forms that they would be able to download off the website. So, it's not, it's something we're going to want to refresh every academic year, to make sure the header is accurate. Michael?
Just to kind of, what I was thinking is, it should be notified via email and written means, not less than two weeks in advance of the use of curriculum. In addition, the policy procedures and steps will be available on the website. So, you're not sticking in the website before the two weeks, you're putting it out there as something that would be a standing basis of information.
Gotcha. Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the policy as presented? Still?
I think, I personally think that, and I know this is gonna sound weird coming from me, but there's areas where certain communication's good and not, and I think social media's probably not an area that's needed for this communication, so, just to kind of put that out there.
Okay. That sounds like a plan. Okay, so then we are actually on to the next item, which is item number 10, the approval of the August 14th, 2017 minutes, and this time, I mean it. Do I have a motion to accept? Made by Andy, seconded by Michael. Are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, and the motion carries 4-0-0. On to the next item, which is the consent agenda with Mark McLaughlin. So, thank you. Is it grants and gifts? Am I doing this again? I'm just gonna, I'm using yours, just put in the middle. It's been a long night, Andy. So, we're gonna do the acceptance of gifts and grants with Matt, so, Matt, so, Mark, you're just gonna have to wait a minute, okay?
I'm gonna sneak it in for you. We have this evening, for your consideration, a gift from Barbara Wolf in Merrimack, New Hampshire, in the amount of $500 to Reed's Ferry Elementary School. This very generous gift from the Wolf family is going to go towards special education staff members and the specialists at the end of, as an end-of-the-year gift. These funds will be used to purchase school supplies for the 1718 school year, for the special ed program, and art, music, library, and computer science. There's no restrictions on these gifts, and we thank Mrs. Wolf for her generous donation, and I put that before you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael?
I move that we accept the generous donation from the Wolf family for $500 for use with, towards the staff at Reed's Ferry School.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries 4-0-0. Now, we are on to item number 12. I promise, Mark, this is your time. As for the consent agenda.
Thank you. On consent tonight, we have the following items. The approval of the Merrimack School District K-12 science curriculum. Approval of name change from Department of Special Services to Department of Student Services. And we also have the following educator nominations. Abby Farnsworth, math teacher at Merrimack High School. Martha Mandeville, special education teacher at Mastercola Elementary School. Amy Piccolo, technology education teacher at Merrimack High School. Amanda Quigley, special education teacher at Reed's Ferry School. And Adam Wignall, technology education teacher at Merrimack High School. Thank you.
Oops, do you have a motion? Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 4-0-0. On to item number 13, which is correspondence, other, first correspondence, any correspondence to come before the board? Andy?
I've had correspondence from one constituent around the PFOA issues with the school district, and another from a constituent with concerns about the location of the new bus parking location on DW Highway.
Thank you. Michael?
I also had correspondence with an individual in regards to the PFOAs in the water for the school district.
Okay. Seeing no others, on to comments. Any comments from the board? Michael?
I would like to make a comment in regards to a statement made during the last meeting regarding Bedford School District's administration building being connected to the high school. I'd like to correct it and make a statement that it is not connected to the high school. It actually is a separate building that is behind one of the elementary schools. I'm not sure which one, but just want to clarify that. And I also believe that some of the other schools that were mentioned are not also attached to the school district's building or high schools or anything like that. So, just want to get that out there, that it's actually not common practice, from what I'm seeing, that the administration buildings are connected to a school.
Okay. I have a comment from, oh, Marge?
I just wanted to formally announce that athletic director, Eric Sabian, has resigned his position, and to take his place will be Michael Susi, who has served as a school counselor, has a background for athletics, and that will happen in September, as soon as we find a suitable replacement for his counseling position. So, to be forthcoming, but just so you realize, we're gonna have a change in that leadership role.
Thank you. No other comments from the board? We will go on to new business. Are there any new business to come before the board? Mark?
Thank you. Just briefly, so, I've mentioned to the board a few times last year that we've undertaken a conversation at two different levels, seven through 12 and K to six, regarding homework and grading. And so, this year marks the beginning of our effort to put that protocol into place, and I'll just briefly describe that, and happy to take questions at a future meeting if you wish. I just want to first start by saying the policy has not changed. The policy that is up on our website is the district policy. The thing that has changed is how we are choosing to incorporate grading into that policy. So, this year, we are making an attempt to separate graded homework from an academic grade. And the reason for that is simple. Academic integrity and grading integrity suggests that we're assessing students' academic performance. And when we intervene in the academic report by something non-academic, like the tendency of a student to do homework or not to do homework, what ends up happening is a, an unclear academic record. So, we're trying to make the academics count and be separate from habits of mind, like a tendency to do homework or not do homework. It's inevitable that when that happens, we will see the result. If a student doesn't do his or her homework, that will show itself in reduced performance, inevitably. In the rare cases where it doesn't, then that would suggest that a student didn't need to do his or her homework to do an important piece of work that's graded. So, I just want to be clear, the policy is unchanged. The effort is to separate the doing of homework from an academic grade. It can be recorded in other ways, and will be, under a habits of mind category, for instance, which would say, does homework, doesn't do homework, but it won't be calculated into an academic grade.
Michael?
Just for clarification, if a student does pass in homework, will the teachers grade that homework and provide it back?
So, what we've said is that there are, so, let me just be also clear, homework is as important to Merrimack as it has ever been. In the case where a teacher would make an assignment, let's say, do these 30 problems tonight, the only reason that that would ever have value is if the teacher takes it and marks it, reviews it, to understand whether the student has mastered the concept that they were trying to practice at home, in which case, it would be a graded assignment that you did at home. It wouldn't be just a checkmark saying, "Mr. Thompson, you just passed in your homework. I'm not really gonna look at the content of the homework, I'm just gonna check that you did it or not, but for that, you get a certain number of points that I will add to your academic grade at the end of the year." So, if a teacher thinks it's important to assign a piece of work that's done at home that's practice, then it would stand to reason that then that would be received in the morning or whenever it's due, and it would be considered an academic grade. It's like a take-home quiz. It's different. Practice for the sake of practice is what we're talking about. So, if you're gonna just give 30 assignments, 30 questions, do the 30 questions at home, come in the morning, and the only thing I do with it is to indicate that it was done or not done, that's, that's not going to be factored into an academic grade.
Okay, I think that there's quite a confusion, because what you've just mentioned to me, I would consider homework and not an assignment that's gonna be graded. So, I think, and I think that's how some of the students are seeing that also, based off the communications I'm seeing. So, if you send me home with 30 questions, and I think I understand them, I don't see that as a, I see that as homework. So, but what you just described to me is that it's not homework, it's an assignment that would be graded.
What I'm trying, what I'm trying to suggest is that homework is essentially, the way that it's being defined now, it's just practice. It's just practice. It's a good thing to do. It could be assigned every night, do your homework. The question is, will that homework that's just done for practice be graded, be added to an academic grade? So, again, my example, Mr., let me, I just want to try to be clear, because I guess I'm not being clear.
To me, anything that goes home, and I think this is the clarification, anything that goes home with a student, to me, is homework. Whether it's a practice homework, or, and to me, it's, it's...
So, if, what I'm, what I'm trying to communicate is, if I'm going to assign you something, right, do these problems at home, and you give them back to me in the morning, and I look at them, and I don't, don't look at whether they were done well or not well, I just look at them and I say, "Hey, Thompson, you did your homework. There's, you know, just X points towards your average," right? That's what we're doing away with. So, if I'm going to assign you 30 questions and you do them at home, we're going to call that a graded assignment. that a graded assignment that you do at home, and if you don't do them at home, or you do some of them, it's a partial grade. These are the protocols that we're working out with our, with our, with our teachers, but I can happily elaborate more down the road, but...
Well, yeah, I guess that's, that's the key, is that the teachers have to be very clear, I think, at the starting point, that I am sending this home, and it is going to be graded.
Correct. And that's actually what we're trying to have more of. The problem is, we're trying to get away from homework assignments that are issued, and then the content of the homework isn't evaluated, it's just whether you did it or not. We're trying to say, if it's worth your doing and your practicing, then call it a grade and factor it into an academic grade, but whether you did it or not, minus whether you did it well or not, is not a valuable exercise. So I could give you credit for homework that you did, it could all be wrong, but you get credit for having done it, and if you factor that credit into the academic grade, it's an inaccurate view of what you can do, because you've got credit for just having done it.
You're good? Okay, and I'm, I'm seeing, it's your risk to give up, so Andy?
Clear definition from the teacher, because what was communicated, and what I think is in the minds of the children, the students right now, is that I don't have to do anything that I take home, so.
So I actually want to formally request that we make this an agenda topic, so we can have a lot of back and forth, because before I came tonight, I had a conversation with my wife, who's an educator and a whole lot smarter than I am, and when she sort of saw the notification, because this made its way through social media, sort of a notification of the homework policy change.
The policy has not changed.
Well, but I mean, the implementation or the, the...
Protocol.
...operization, operative, I can't say the word.
They're using protocol.
Yeah, okay. So, so here's the deal, is that the way you've described it is, the homework is optional, you don't have to do it. However, homework has value when you get to the point where remediation is required, because if a student is able to do the homework and do it suc, and do it successfully, but when they go to the test, they freeze or whatever like that, the homework has value. And the way that it's been articulated through the different classes is it takes the value of the homework away from remediation and some of the other aspects of it versus just a grade. So I think I'd like to have a conversation at the table with some educators to talk about how homework is going to be used if it's not going to be graded, what are the other benefits to homework within that, and then talk about whether the operas, operas pol, it's two-way, I can't see the word, the actual go for, the, the implementation of it is being done correctly and is it really understood by the parents, because right now there's a lot of confusion.
Well, yes, I mean, it's the first day, and so I would assume...
Yeah, but that's what they grasp onto, the first day, and they're like, this is what it is for the whole year with no other data, so.
Yep.
So I, I just, I think this deserves more time than just a section here, but I would really like to have some educators or department heads or whoever's appropriate to talk about how they, within a math department or an English department, would utilize homework to help in things, because remediation's a big deal now with, with competencies and things like that, and homework could have a place, and I'd like to sort of talk about that.
Homework, I just want to be clear, we, I look forward to that conversation. Homework has a place. Nothing has changed about the place of homework. It does imply, however, that students take responsibility for understanding the value of homework that's assigned, and so the consequence of not doing homework is you're probably going to not have as good a grade when something is, when, when there's a measurement that you assess. So there's a correlation.
Right, but there, but the fact that the homework is not being maybe looked at or graded by a teacher potentially, just to see if what the student did was correct or not, could have an impact on that student's learning. I'm saying, those, those that choose not to do it are going to roll the dice. Those that do choose to do it, that need to get remediation at some point, that could be a tool to be, to help them to, and help the teacher to understand what they know and what they don't know. I mean, that's, and that's what I want to have the conversation. What is the value of homework now? And because it's now optional or not required, what are the, what are the motivations for students to continue to do it beyond just the grade, as opposed to just their own personal health and well-being? Right?
Naomi?
I agree with it becoming an agenda item, because I think this is a robust conversation that should happen. I do want to say, though, that I think this is a very positive change. I think that we need to talk about the ways, making sure everybody understands it, but what it sounds to me has actually happened, is saying that busy work should no longer be valued, and I think that that's an important step to take. And so I agree with, with everything that's been brought up about clarifying when something does lead towards a grade, what the value is of doing things that aren't graded, and all of those, but I, I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose within that, the fact that I think we've, we've done something pretty important here at the core of it.
Michael?
I just want to also reiterate what Naomi just said, and I think the busy work needs to go, and I think that I've voiced that opinion before, so I appreciate that, and I think it's a good move. I just think it's clarification for everybody's would be good.
Excellent. And we're definitely calling it a protocol, not a policy, so I know that I've, I've heard the word "policy" thrown around, I think, in the same circles you might have, not necessarily, you know, the Bible, it's Facebook, but we definitely want to make sure that they're getting, you know, the right information from the right source, and that's us. On that note, I think that we have a lot to study on this. You know, I think we have to have an initial conversation, and I think that this feedback is going to help you at leadership meetings to say, this is the vibe from just the initial understanding of what this is. This is what kids come home saying, basically, that school is awesome, there's no more homework, we canceled it. So, you know, just getting that clarifying word, I think, is, and being able to reiterate that from your, your building leadership will be very valuable, and, and I think this initial feedback showing that's not one big rumspringer, whatever, is definitely what, you know, we want to call, call to the attention. On that note, I think that as we have measurements come into play, and I think after midterms would be a great opportunity, which I think is also after budget, so we'll feel a little more relaxed, not too much more relaxed, but a little, to go over and say, how have these adjustments, you know, impacted student performance? So I know it's a very small window, but to say, does it, you know, does it create a more dynamic learning environment, because the kids don't feel the pressure of staying up till midnight, doing things that aren't being evaluated for effectiveness? So again, you know, if, if they're staying up, you know, no one wants the kids staying up till midnight, period, but if they're, if they're doing the work because there's value in it, that will be studied by the teacher, and then the, the feedback will give value. You know, those are things that we want, we want to continue this conversation, as we're making a change in, in dynamic that, you know, parents are communicated with, how we understand, how we can help to support your message to your teachers and your students, and we just, we definitely want to see as you're, you're making those dynamic changes, how we can help to support you in that. So that will come with conversation, so we look forward to it, and I think it'll be coming up in a very short order, but I think just the feedback to your, to your department heads at this point is, is going to be helpful, very helpful. So it'll be a very robust meeting, Marge. That and some policies. So is there any other new business? I'm seeing none. Let's go on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? I had one. On the twenty-second, the Greater Woods Subcommittee met. They are printing more large maps, so again, the maps that will be at the middle school, and all access locations will be the full property. We used to have just a school loop map on there, and then when people went off the school loop, they had no idea where they were. So with the, the comprehensive map, it will show where the school district property is, but will also show the, the full layout of, of the property, so. And also, there was a new boardwalk added to the, off of the Bambi Lane Bridge it just did, so it's a better trail area for, for students and to get toward the outlooks. So, and we're developing a new trail, which is not on the map yet, so we're not going to talk too much about it, because you won't be able to find it on the map, other than some signs on trees. So, but that's going over toward the Beaver Outlook. I know that this fall, we should be getting more information about that Eagle Scout project, which is on-town property, but again, very impactful to the district, which is rebuilding the outdoor classroom. So there's a lot more to come. I think it's a very exciting time for Greater Woods, and it's right in our middle school's backyard, so we'll reap the benefits, and so that's what I had. On to item number sixteen, public comments on agenda items. Putting you on the spot? No? Not good? Okay, we're good. And then on to item number seventeen, which is signing of the manifest, and then I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, sections C and E. Do I have a motion? Made by Michael, seconded by Andy. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Michael?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. Thank you, and good night.